Welcome, everyone, to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners Health for the Purpose Transacting the General Business of Township. Today's date is April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building and is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, if you could summarize any public comment received?
No public comment was received, sir.
Thank you. And at this time, I would ask you to please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection to honor the service men and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the pleasure reasons.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your service to our township. My name is Tom Danta, and I live at one zero nine Paper Mill Road. I'm here with my neighbors Philip and Renee Cray, who are also up at one oh seven. Should know that for sure. I don't know if you know our situation, but I have reached out, I think, to everybody on the committee with just a quick byline to let you guys know. And I know I reached out to Mr. Lee, and he responded back very kindly to us as well. I don't know if you guys know of our sewer situation, the backup that we've experienced now twice in ten days with active live sewage that was in our properties and our basements. And we had, you know, with our various situations with the sub pumps and removal of that water and the mitigation from Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. We just wanted to basically be here to see if you guys had any particular information or had any questions for us with regards to what's been going on. What I'd like to also make comment to you guys is that when we had called initially to the township offices, and kudos to the ladies up front, because I know how it is to get phone calls, but they basically from March twenty-fourth, essentially, or March twenty-third, up until the eighth of, you know, maybe not even eighth, it was Monday morning of this past week, was the first time anybody on the board had heard about our situation. And I know myself, I called at least three times, and I called nine-one-one the evening of the Saturday, the twenty-third, to report what was going on. I know my neighbors called at least three times each, so at least fifteen phone calls to go to the front desk that was never passed on to anybody in the township. Basically, we were told, well, it's an EPA thing, you can give them a call, find out whether they can help you out, or, you know, we sold the rights to the Sewer Authority, it's no longer our problem, you need to take care of it yourself. So I called my plumber, I called BCWA, and like I said, you know, we could bore you to death with all the nitty-grities and all the horrible things we had to deal with, the lack of their involvement from Bucks County to reach out to us and follow through other than sending a guy on that Monday, said, well, it's raining back, can't do anything until the rain goes down, and then didn't bother to look in the pipes or do anything until it happened again the following Wednesday with the blowouts, like much worse than it was before. And only then did they kind of try to scope down at the corner of Paper Mill and Gulf Roads to see what was going on up front, further up our street here for us, to determine that they may have found a clog or there was tree roots in the system, what have you. We don't know if they fixed it or not, but we were assured that by the end of that week or this week that they were going to send cameras to look up the pipes, see what was going on, if there were any kind of collapsed pipes in our system now, if their roots were removed, cleared out. I believe they had sent a camera guy or camera crew this morning or this afternoon to look through the pipes kind of thing. But, um, in all honesty, I don't feel safe in my house right now with upcoming weather events. They admitted to, I guess, Mr. Lee, that there actually was a problem for the first time on Monday, and, you know, it's already like twenty-one days in that we were all suffering, you know, the horrible stuff that we had to go through. And now with the weather tonight, you know, it's supposed to be, you know, point four inches of rain, but more rain on Thursday. And, you know, I'm not going to be sleeping tomorrow night for sure, waiting for the basement to explode again. And, you know, it's horrible to hear that kind of stuff, and when we found out that other neighbors as well were dealing with it, you know, along the creek that runs in front of our houses by the swim club, all the way through to the baseball fields, people that are living on the creek there are having to, they are experiencing their own backflow issues and problems. People who live along the creek have to deal, they're talking about how they don't want to deal with active sewer in the creek. And it seems to me there's a lot of stories that people have had experiences with that, you know, our question that we had amongst ourselves, talking over the fences, was if there was anybody that did any kind of oversight. You know, I understand it's no longer a Springfield Township issue, but is there anybody that is anybody on the backs of Bucks County within the township? Is anybody following up with them? Because if you, if you know, if you check at the Welcome to Springfield message board on Facebook, there's at least fifty posts from other residents who have had issues in their basements, backup sinks in the water, flooding issues going back and forth. And it's, I don't know if, and we don't know all the details, because we were told that allegedly as part of the transaction of selling the services to Bucks County, that all the residents who were in the situation or had any kind of issue, we're going to get the one-way valves installed. If there was any kind of issues with the sewers, they're going to dig up and break up the sewers from sewage and, you know, runoff water. And we're finding out that our sewer and our runoff water, because we actually don't have any kind of gutters on Paper Mill, but down at the bottom of the hill where it empties into that creek thing, that we don't have any kind of breakdown like that, and it's very commonplace for our pipes to carry both sewage and rainwater. We've talked to different people, there's different shunts that Bucks County has put in to divert some waters here and there, but again, I just wanted to, you know, we just wanted to come in tonight to share our experiences for you, and if you guys had any particular questions about how they're handling it, how they're not handling it, where do we go from here, that kind of stuff, that's the only reason why we are in here tonight. And again, to say thank you to you guys for doing what you do, but we feel that we could use a little bit more help with a little bit more punch, have a louder voice, maybe approach Bucks County and say, hey, you know, what are you doing or why are you not doing what you said you were supposed to do? And now they're coming up with settlement offers for us with insurances sometime with next week, they're going to be coming through with their own second adjuster, and, you know, who knows? But still leaves me particularly with no washer or dryer now going on, almost going to be, they come next week, it's going to be at least beginning of fourth week coming this weekend. I had to replace my own hot water heater, I'm living in that house right now because no one said to get out of it. You know, common sense would dictate if you're up to your elbows in sewage water, but Bucks County didn't say anything about needing to evacuate Kate and her family, who are neighbors that live next door to me, they had to go because their two-year-old is asthmatic and didn't want to be, couldn't, shouldn't have been in that house. You know, we're not young folks, and, you know, just hoping to, you know, the last couple of nights, actually every night for the last three weeks, I've been sleeping with the windows open, just to vent the, you know, the smells of a very clean porta potty, you know, at my house. And then when changes or when the second eruption comes through, that porta potty smell disappears, and it's Johnny on the spot in the worst possible way. So we'll see what happens tonight. We are all very cautiously optimistic, and, you know, we just want to hope that you guys are now hearing us as opposed to the last three weeks where we felt unheard. Thank you for your time.
How have you responded?
They only, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, they only sent us the mitigation services team, which is basically the guys that come in and basically with vacuum cleaners and mists and fogs, disinfectant fogs and fogs, takes care of sanitizing the home. But they have fans going on. At one point in my house, I had four fans, three dehumidifiers, and two air scrubbers that they were using, running twenty-four-seven since the twenty-third of March. And then on April third, they're coming back to sign off that they finished their process for us, and while they were in my basement on eight-thirty, nine o'clock in the morning, on that Wednesday morning, the vesuvius happened. And they ran, they lost over ten thousand dollars in equipment from this stuff going through, and that's, that's pretty much been it so far. All of us have been sporadically beginning contacts from Bucks County, like I got in touch with a woman named Shelley, who apparently is a coordinator for the COO. We had given, been given the contact of a guy named Bob, who was covering the shift for a guy named Artie or Art, that we've come to find out is your contact for Bucks County Sewer Authority, is the same guy that we recall, who was just basically a technician who's running down the pipes. He was out for work, we found out he was out for workman's comp for the first week and a half of two weeks of our experience, and the guy named Bob, whoever his last name, was very helpful and gave us assurances, but, you know, we didn't see Artie until a week and a half into the process. Yes, sir.
Are there any sort of backflow preventers installed on the property? Is that a Bucks County water and sewer responsibility? I mean, but, you know, is there, are there devices installed that will prevent sewer from coming into them?
Absolutely. They're called flapper valves. It's basically like, if you have, like, if you envision a downspout from water from your side of your house, if you put like a trapdoor on, like a doggy door.
One-way only.
One-way only. If anything comes back, it flips back and it shuts down, prevents that from happening. So we were, we were told that they were going to, and there's also manual ones you can install. If you feel the weather's coming, you can go out there and spin the wheel and drop the gate down yourself. But I know personally, I don't have the memory capacity to remember to open that darn thing once the weather has passed. And we've talked to other neighbors who are saying that, you know, during the rainfall, they are, they know themselves, just from living in their home, they can't flush the toilets for no more than three or four times during a rainstorm, or no shower. We were told no showers, no bathroom activity for the duration of the weather event while it was happening. Well, yeah, of course, no kidding, it's all gravity related, it's going to come right back up, what are you going to do? But, yeah, they have flat, they have flapper valves. Most of, some of the people who have already dealt with this and have gotten fed up with it, they've installed their own flapper valves at the lowest point in their homes. My own brother who lives down the street from me had one installed in his basement utility sink, because his neighbor next door to him had the blowout happen as well. And he doesn't have a toilet, but he does have like a laundry sink down there, so he had a plumber install the valve himself. But they told us that part of the process of fixing it, that they were going to dig up our yards and install that one-way flapper valve. But again, here we are in the fourth, starting the fourth week coming to Saturday, and our grounds are pristine. So we're hoping, again, cautiously optimistic.
What time you?
Well, I'm sorry. What was the date of the second event?
April third, Wednesday, April third.
Which was a lesser storm than the one-
Lesser storm, but the volume that created was like almost at least fifty percent more, much worse.
Yeah. So I mentioned to you, I'm maybe not as bad as your boat, but I'm in your boat, in that the one from a few weeks ago was in my basement, and I have a claim, and turns out I do have a backflow preventer, and it just wasn't functioning properly.
Yeah, so, you know, like I said, I know it's quote-unquote "no longer the township's responsibility," but we feel that, you know, the more concern for us at this point in the game was the fact that for the last two weeks, raw sewage has been pumping out of our basements into the yards and now flowing onto Paper Mill Road and coming down the hill.
Well, it's important to know, so we appreciate you letting us know.
Somebody had called us already today and arranged for the streetsweeper to come through and process at least that part of it, and that's, I think, Phil has said that that's where it happened this evening, so the streets are getting cleaned up again. But again, that's something that, and we're grateful, so thank you for that. But again-
Sorry you're dealing with this. The one, if there's any silver lining, it sounds like they're being a little responsive in terms of paying for remediation.
Well, not yet, but the litigation they paid for, yeah, absolutely. Right now, we are in, you know, what, stage two of whatever that might be, and nobody has told us what stage two is going to be.
And they're starting a project in Windmore-
They are.
-for a similar issue in a section where they're getting a lot of infiltration of stormwater in their system, and they're actually proactively doing something there, so hopefully-
I think you've got their attention now.
Well, we reached out to Mr. Nelson's office as well. I don't know if other neighbors have reached out to Ms. Madeline Dean with regards to letting her know what's going on, what's happening, but we, even from their office as well, it's Buck County. So, like, well, our next phone call was going to be to Bucks County, you know, attorney and not state representatives, and say, look, this is happening in Bucks County, in for Montgomery County, and Montgomery County doesn't want to really do much about it, then how about you guys maybe make, at least let our voices be heard, that we're not just five residents, that it's, you know, people are concerned.
Yeah.
And like I said, we didn't want the, we didn't want the sewer being tracked on the pets that walked up and down Paper Mill Road by the golf course. It's a wonderful stretch for, you know, for the dogs and people to be up and down, because the golf course is right there. You know, you have a little bit of a doggy run per se that people don't pick things up the way they're supposed to, but the definition. But, I mean, now, even the golf course got flooded with the sewage as well, you know, up further up or Paper Mill Road kind of levels out, it went right across the street, and you can look from, at least from my house, at one and on, you can look, all the divots, all the lower parts are on that side of the fence, and even the water element down by the, by the golf club, sorry, by the swim club, I'm sure got soiled as well. So.
Less of a silver lining is we know that, and it's really good that you're on their radar now, so, and obviously, if they have to keep investing money in remediation, it's better for them to just fix the problem.
Right.
But we do know that these systems were designed for less people.
Sure, sure.
Less rain, we're getting more storms than ever.
Absolutely, yeah.
Like, the issue in my basement used to happen like once every two years, now it's like four times a year.
Yeah.
Just because we're getting just so much more rain, and these systems are overwhelmed, so.
Yeah, you're more patient than I would. I mean, you're getting this, when it rains heavily, yeah, I get water in my basement too. I mean, the ground just comes up and seeps up to the sub pump hole in the floor, sub pump cycles on, sometimes if it gets really bad, it'll creep in through the walls and that kind of stuff. Freshwater, I got no problem with, but when I'm walking around and there's corn and black beans floating in my basement on top of everything else going on, there's the line. I'm not crossing, I'm not, that's drawn in sand.
Not fun.
And not fun, not fun. And kudos to you that you put up with it for four times already. I've had it up to here already with just the two, and I jokingly sent a letter to the Montgomery, to Bucks County lady and said, I hope, we're hoping for a trifecta this week. So we're all fingers crossed and hoping, and even the guy, the mitigation guy's saying, we're not coming back, this is ridiculous. So they're at their wit's end, they've lost money in equipment and trying to do things, and quite honestly, Paul Davis's group of people have been the best in at least a sympathetic ear, telling us what's going on, what's happening every step of the way, and it's difficult, you know, as you guys all can understand and sympathize, and that, to us, is huge, but the deaf ear from what, you know, what can we do, we can't do nothing, you know, it's, we need to do something. And like I said, when I reached out to each one of you, I think, you know, with the check with Mr. Lee email that I sent out to everybody, I'm like, you know, if you guys can get together as a township and say, hey, what's going on, what's the problem, you know, are you fixing it, what's the plan to fix or not to fix it? And then hopefully the other neighborhoods can resolve their situations on their own as well, because it seems like someone had said on Dale Street the other night, there was, from the storm, they had an incident in their place. There's another one, you on Leister, they said that one guy said on Redfern, the sewer caps, everything was flowing in the water, the three sewer things down the, sorry, the manhole covers all the way through were floating, and the water coming out of them, stuff down by the baseball field, you know, there's a lot of people that are getting these backflow issues coming through, and I don't know that they're, they're certainly not getting to you guys, I don't think, because, you know, when I saw them on our Facebook thing that we talked about, just to warn people about don't walk in the sewage, people were chiming in with experiences and stories and expenses and what they all had to go through, and the common thread in all of that was, oh, good luck with BCWSA, you know, hopefully you'll get something done, they'll hear you. Our level of trying to make the noise louder so that they do hear us and know that, you know, just signing us a check for the inconvenience of having, you know, gray water, not even gray water, it's black water, sewage water, in your basements, just for the health hazard. We don't, I don't even know if there's anything from this whole experience, I mean, actually having to stay there for the last twenty-one days straight, you know, everything, I'm fine now, but six months from now, what's going to happen? I asked those guys, are there going to be health screenings for us or health checks for us being exposed to this the way we have been? And, oh, we'll see, you know, if you feel you have to go to the doctor's office, you submit the bills to us, and like, I'm trying to figure out, you know, send me the receipt for reimbursement, it's not solving the problem. Yeah, it's going to put a big Band-Aid on it, and we're going to have, you know, new water heaters and new clothes dryers, and some of us are going to have whole new HVAC systems, but there are things that people have lost that are heirlooms and memorabilia and treasures that we're never going to get back, never going to be replaced, never going to see again, and it's not because we decide to put that stuff in the basement, you know, that's where we just keep that stuff, or have offices down there, or have utility rooms or workout rooms or whatever, and to have all that gone and destroyed and taken out of our houses in garbage bags. And, you know, one neighbor had an heirloom Amish-made toy chest for her baby daughter, made from scrap, you know, handmade in typical Amish fashion, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Their mitigators put it down toy chest. So a little wallmark that toy chest, you know, it would probably say you have it. Well, you know, you don't have the, you know, she has an Amish-made table, but the two leaves of the table were kept down in the basement, two leaves of the table destroyed, thrown away already. Now, the dining table doesn't have leaves for anything more than four people. So, you know, there's all that stuff that they're going to, they're going to put on the claims, they're going to be very widespread, broad terms, clothing, towel, desk, you know, whatever. So, you know, we're very hopeful, and we're going to bring something back or that kind of stuff, but, you know, I want to be able to, you know, sleep in peace and be able to know that if the valves don't work or they do come back, at least there's something has been done to help us fight a little bit of that battle.
Yeah, Tom, you have my direct info now, so keep in touch and let me know if I can-
Absolutely, I mean, I don't want to take up the whole evening, because we could go on forever, and because we've all, you know, we're all PTSD from this experience as well. So, you know, if any of you guys ever want to reach out to us or question us beyond this meeting tonight or whatever it is, you certainly have my email address, I have no problems doing it. Township has all of our phone numbers already, please feel free to reach out if you have any kind of questions or concerns, if you have any kind of follow-up. Because when I send that email to all of you, as, you know, check with your citizens, check with your residents, your neighbors, if they see what's going on, because our situation can't be unique, and obviously, you're finding out that it's not.
Yeah. Well, keep in touch, because I'd like to know how that progresses and how-
Absolutely right.
-Bucks County sewer is treating you, so.
And I wanted to say publicly as well, thank you for coming out to us at one time where we had the golf ball issue. I don't know if you were part of that meeting as well.
No, I wasn't there.
We were, Jim had been some.
So I was there, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we had, completely unrelated, but you know, living on that part of Paper Mill Road, we were very happy to be once of the, the second bounce golf club memberships.
Did they find that in the sewers? Did they find a jammed up golf ball?
La, 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 la. I don't even want to know what they found in the sewer. I'm hoping it was just tree roots. But that they got rid of. But now we have no assurances that that sewer didn't collapse when they did the road reuter-ing. If there's any kind of functionality that they're going through, we've been told that everything is open, but.
Right. And you said that they videoed it today?
Well, he told us they were supposed, they were going to videotape it last week. We were told, oh, there's a crisis in Ben Salem, all hands are off to take care of that. So now our scoping and television camera was supposed to happen this week, but because of the event that that happened in Ben Salem, I don't know that they ever stuck the camera up the tubes. So, you know, we were assured that they, they, they admitted to you guys on Monday that there was a clog. They said it was corrected. I don't know what that means officially, technically. But like you said, down with the weather tonight and the weather tomorrow, we're, we're all very hopeful that they, you know, we don't have, as I said, the repeat of the event.
I have a general process question. Instances like these, are there any, is there any way, any report that BC, that fix, I guess we'll call it, gives to you, Mike, or any, any way for you to know that this incident has happened?
No, the only way we find out is if the, the residents contact us or, and, and normally if it goes into the front office, they would convey that to the Public Works Department. Public Works would contact BCWSA if the homeowner hadn't done so. Cause they have some direct contacts with the field personnel where they can get a little bit quicker response, you know, provided we're, you know, during the business day.
Sure.
On a Saturday night, you know, when you're calling 911, you know, that goes to Montgomery County Dispatch, Public Safety, they're not going to.
But I just, I just went, when I called 911, I just figured, I didn't know who else to call.
Yeah, sure.
You know, Saturday night, 10 o'clock at night, you know.
That's, that's an emergency.
So BCWSA has a, an emergency line. Did you call that?
We called them eventually, one by one. We, we didn't know that was happening to each other. We thought it was happening individually. Until we're, you know, we all out in the front yard and we're all like, you know, she's carrying out a garbage can from the bathroom. That's like this big, throwing water out the window, disappearing. And then he comes out doing the same thing. I'm like, oh my God.
And then of course, if Public Works were to receive, let's say multiple reports of that, what would Ian, for example, do with that information, talk to the field personnel?
The field personnel, yeah, he would say, what's going on? You know, we're getting.
We did have a, a public works truck with two gentlemen in a drive up and down Paper Mill Road during the first week. But that was the end of it. They don't, I don't think they even stopped. They may have been going to hump itself. But we were bringing outside, we saw the, the green truck, pickup truck drive by and come turn around at the top of the hill and drive back down again. So I don't know if they were, they were sent out to look at it, wondering what all the flashing lights were all about, what was going on on the top of the street. Coincidence, but I.
Was that during the storm event?
It was part of the, there was a time when Bucks County had Paper Mill Road looking like Mario Kart. They had like nine or, nine or 10 white pickup trucks with flashing lights buzzing forwards and backwards, up and down the hill. And I think that on that time they came like middle, like, oh my, like Monday or Tuesday of last week. Again, the, all the dates are, are, you know, the, the current events are all like blurring together, at least for me, with regards to, you know, what, who, what went down.
And then is there, is it worthwhile for us as, you know, township manager to send a letter that says, hey, we've just, just in summary, we've had five residents experience this. Could you update us on, if, if there is a holistic or systemic intervention, please let us know so we can advise about that intervention. Would that be reasonable?
Find out exactly from the Chief Operating Officer. I'll contact him tomorrow and find out exactly what, the number of occasions that were reported, which I think I know at this point from your comment. What they did to remedy it, you know, what the cause was, like, you know, we're speculating tree roots, right? Most of the time that's what it is. You know, like, was that resolved? Have you scheduled the video of the system? And what are you going to do going forward? Cause there's, there's root treatment you can do and run through the line periodically to discourage the roots from growing. And that's something that we used to do when we owned the system. We would also put degreaser into the lines in areas where we knew there was high populations of people who used a lot of grease and went down the system or institutional facilities that would, you know, dispose of grease down the, the line. And we would run that proactively to try and address these types of issues and prevent them from happening.
Sure.
So it's likely that they have the video scheduled, if it hasn't already been done, to, to see what they're dealing with down there. If they have a break in the pipe that's letting groundwater in, I mean, that's contributing to the problem as well. You know, the roots probably are the cause, but the groundwater infiltration is adding to the issue, particularly during those storm events.
Sure.
So if they know they've got like gaps in those pipes, they'll do an INI project, which they're doing in the Windmore section right now, or planning to do.
And they want that fixed because they have, they have to pay, treat all that extra water. If there's water getting in their system, it's not groundwater. They're, they have to process it and pay for it. So it's in their best interest not to allow it to happen too. Okay.
Very interesting. Supervise, know what he does, if we give it away, doing a flat pipe. And they said, line, in fact, the end.
Yep, yep.
Would really appreciate it if it's called, something's got to be done. We know that all types of maintenance, but, but you know, that house, but you guys are not, you know.
Someone made a comment, I don't know if it was you, it might've been someone on one of those threads or something about in that section of the neighborhood that there is no separation of stormwater.
Yeah, that's not, that's not accurate, correct? That's not accurate because there's a lack of infrastructure for stormwater conveyance. That's true. But, and that there's a separate sanitary sewer line, but it's not what they call combined system. The city of Philadelphia has a combined system where they have everything all in one.
Right.
Almost by necessity. I mean, it would be hard not to separate it.
So that, that's not the, the case. But there is an absence of stormwater facilities. But it all goes to that low spot that Dale and, or Gulf and.
Gulf and Paper Mill.
Paper Mill.
Yeah.
So.
Good. The only other thing I'd add, and we kind of keep this in our back pocket too, but we talked about this on Monday night. Timing wise, there was a pretty big article in the Inquirer on Sunday with regards to the privisation of these utilities, specifically citing Bucks County. So the spotlight's on them. I don't know how many people are reading the Inquirer these days, but I read it. Two people in this room read it. So, but I, I would, I would certainly keep that in our back pocket so that, you know, if there isn't cooperation, go to the press and just sort of add to the story. But hopefully we just keep the pressure on them. And I must say, given what you've endured for the last couple of weeks, extraordinary eloquent and calm and.
Well, you know, what, what, it, it's wasted energy to, to lose it. And there's no, there's nothing, nothing gained by screaming louder. I mean, we were already, you know, we, we joke amongst ourselves that we say, yeah, maybe one, one voice really can't be heard that much along the din of everything else going on. But maybe a chorus can, can get above the din and say, hey, you know, the, please.
We're here, we're here.
It's hard to be heard through all the crap.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And on that note, have a good evening, everybody. Thank you for your years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Well, here now we will go into our committee reports. As the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I do not have a report this evening. So we will go to the chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I have three motions and a resolution tonight. My first motion is regarding subdivision at 40 slash 42 Grove Avenue. I move the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated April the 8th, 2024, from a Gerald Rath Esquire, on behalf of the owners of the real property located at 40 and 42 Grove Avenue, Flower Town, extending the 90-day subdivision slash land development plan review period through May 9, 2024. The subject of the application is a lot line adjustment that proposes to transfer 2,936 square feet of land from the property at 42 Grove Avenue to the property at 40 Grove Avenue. Extension of time will allow the applicant the opportunity to revise the plans in order to comply with the Springfield Township Code. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Please record unanimous vote.
My second motion was regarding a land development for Mount St. Joseph's Academy, 120 West Wisahickon Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated March 22, 2024, from Bernadette Kearney Esquire, on behalf of the Mount St. Joe's Academy, 120 West Wisahickon Avenue, Flower Town, extending the 90-day subdivision slash land development plan review period through December 31, 2024. The subject of the application is the construction of a 32,000 square foot building addition, 40 new off-street parking spaces and a landscaped courtyard and four new tennis courts. Extension of time will allow the applicant the opportunity to revise their plans in order to comply with the Springfield Township Code. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Please record a unanimous vote.
My third motion, Mr. President, is regarding the Planning Commission. I move the Board of Commissioners reappoint Stacy Blanken to a new four-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Planning Commission. Ms. Blanken's new term of service shall expire February the 16th, 2028. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay. My last report is a, is a, is a resolution number 1639, UCC Board of Appeals. In accordance with Section 13 slash 5 of the Code of Springfield Township, I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 1639, a resolution appointing David Sands, George Schaefer and Heath Schwartz to serve on the Springfield Township Building Code Board of Appeals. The term of service for each member shall be as follows. David Sands, April 15, 2025. George Schaefer, April 15, 2026, and Heath Schwartz, April 15, 2027. That is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Uh, Mike, can we just publicly state how that board would, would be, uh, come together? Under what circumstances?
Sure. If, if an individual applies for a building permit and the building inspector suggests that the building needs to be sprinkled, for instance. You know, that individual can appeal that and say, you know, it's course prohibitive and I don't think it's necessary for whatever those reasons may be. And the Building Code Board of Appeals would hear that matter and then render a decision based upon testimony that's accepted by the building inspector pursuant to the UCC code and the applicant based upon their hardship. The last time this board had to convene was related to a proposal to convert an existing historic building into a mixed-use commercial on the bottom floor and residential on the top floor, and the apartment sizes were below the required minimum size under the Uniform Construction Code. So in that instance, we have a historical building, they're trying to adapt it for a repurpose, opposed to tear it down. They needed relief in order to, you know, make it work. So they awarded, they approved a variance for a smaller, slightly smaller apartment size than would be required by the UCC. That's how it will be applied.
And we sort of thoughtly, thoughtfully appointed these three individuals because of their professional experience?
Yeah, the UCC, the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code lays out the requirements for the folks who are going to be on your appeals board. So in this instance, we have an engineer, we have an architect, and we have an individual who is not only in the construction trade, but happened to be a building inspector at one point in time. So they're familiar with the codes.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Please record unanimous vote.
And that concludes my reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We will now go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. First regarding the bill listing for the month, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the March check reconciliation in the amount of $454,412.57 in the April bill listing in the amount of $1,144,917.26. And that's my motion.
If you have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record unanimous vote.
Great. And regarding this month's zoning hearing board, the zoning hearing board meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 22nd, at 7:00 PM within the Springfield Township building, where they'll hear the following three applications. The first from Stephen and Samantha Honeywell, owners of the property located at 910 Campbell Lane in Windmore. That property, those applicants are requesting a variance, seeking to relocate the existing side property through the subdivision process that will have the existing detached masonry garage, three feet, three inches from the adjusted property line. That property is owned within the D Residential District of Ward 5. It will also hear the, or they'll have the application from the Institute, Institute of the, for the Achievement of Human Potential, owners of the property located at 8801 Stanton Avenue. That applicant is seeking, requesting a variance for use of the property and for the required onsite parking. That applicant seeks approval to use portions of the property for catered rental events as well as the headquarters and a private school for neurology, neurologically impaired youth under the name of the Institutes for the Achievement of Human Potential. That property is zoned within the Institutional District of Ward 2. And finally, the application of Andre Stefano and Beth Lesko, owners of the property located at 401 East Mill Road. Those applicants are seeking to subdivide the property with the proposed lot having frontage on Cedar Lane and East Mill Road. The variance has been requested to allow the proposed lot to have 50 feet of lot frontage instead of the required 75 feet on East Mill. That property is zoned within the A Residential District of Ward 6. Copies of each of those applications are available for review in the Community Development Office during normal business hours. And sadly, all three of those applicants have sought continuances on their applications and their, their testimony on, at the zoning hearing board. So in actuality, there will be no zoning hearing board meeting this month. It'll be moved to next month.
Well, they'll meet, but they just won't.
They'll meet. They won't be to you. Excuse me. So that's my, that's my report. Oh, and finally, regarding 40 and 42 Grove Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Office of the Township Solicitor to execute a settlement agreement with the owners of the property located at 40 and 42 Grove Avenue in Flower Town to settle a land use appeal involving an accessory structure that spans both properties. In accordance with the terms of the agreement, the owner shall not be permitted to store more than three personally owned antique vehicles at the property and shall be required to utilize the property in strict compliance with the uses permitted in the underlying residential zoning district. And that's my motion.
If you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record unanimous vote.
And that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will now go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Ratzavon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this month.
As well, thank you, Commissioner Ratzavon. We will now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll first begin with the recycling report and during the month of March, Springfield Township. Turning the mic on there, sorry. During the month, Springfield Township residents recycled 134.9 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 72.9%. The net cost for the month was $22,998.04. Then leaf compost. The Board of Commissioners would like to remind residents that leaf compost is now available at the Township's distribution site located on West Wisahickon Avenue. Leaf compost can be added to soil as a soil amendment or used as a top dressing around landscape plants in place of hardwood mulch. Leaf compost will also stimulate earthworms and other helpful organisms and will retain more water and moisture than traditional mulch. Then regarding the Environmental Advisory Commission. Via email dated April 2nd, 2024, Richard Metz informed the Township Manager that it was necessary for him to resign his position as an associate member of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission effective immediately because he'll be relocating to the Chestnut Hills section of Philadelphia. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank Mr. Metz for contributing his time and his talents to the Springfield Township community. He has been a tremendous individual and his contributions are many, you know, so he will be deeply missed, but as I said, he's, he's basically just moving across Stanton Avenue, so he's not leaving us entirely. But as a result of Mr. Metz's resignation, there presently exists two vacancies as associate members of the Environmental Advisory Commission. Springfield Township residents who are interested in serving as an associate member of the Environmental Advisory Commission are encouraged to send a letter of interest or resume to the attention of Mike Taylor, Michael Taylor, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, PA, 19038, or email to Michael Taylor at the email address M Taylor at SpringfieldMonco.org. That will include my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner May. We'll now go to the Chairwoman of the Public Works Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three items tonight. The first is bid 2024 for the Highway Resurfacing Project. On April 3rd, 2024, bids were received for the Township's 2024 Highway Resurfacing and Milling Program. Bids were received from three contractors, Glasgow Incorporated, Highway Materials Incorporated, and James D. Morrissey Incorporated. The bids ranged from a low of 276,019,000 to a high of 311,542,050 cents based upon 2,435 tons of applied in-place asphalt and 16,010 square yards of road milling. The budget for this project is 325,000. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Glasgow Incorporated of Glenside to mill and resurface specific township streets for the combined low bid of $91 per ton for resurfacing and $3.04 per square yard for road milling for a total estimated price of $276,019.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Please record unanimous vote.
Second is regarding Resolution Number 1640 for Arbor Day. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1640, a resolution proclaiming Saturday, April 27th, 2024, is Arbor Day in Springfield Township. As part of the Township's annual Arbor Day celebration, the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission will be conducting an Arbor Day ceremony and tree giveaway that will begin at 10 o'clock AM in Windhull Park, 8300 Flower Town Avenue in Windmore. Residents are also encouraged to enter a drawing to receive one of 30 free trees by registering their name, address and contact information beginning Friday, April 12th through 4:00 PM on Friday, April 19th. The Board of Commissioners urges all citizens to join with the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to plant new trees.
That's a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or comments?
Some questions, yes. Is that one applicant or one entry per household? One per day?
I don't know that the rules are all that specific.
Craig, was it one per household? Was that discussed? I think, I believe it's one per household.
That would be the spirit of the.
I was gonna say, let's keep the spirit.
Sharing the love, yes.
One per household and then one per day?
Sounds like John's trying to get.
John really wants to.
Yeah.
As do I. We're in it to win it this year.
Next, also a 50/50?
I, I clarify that, not tonight, but I can check in with folks on the Shade Tree Commission and confirm that it is one entry per household, period.
And you need to be, you need to be a resident of the township.
That's right. That we can confirm.
That's right.
And next year, we'll be sure to have a solicitor's office look at this.
Ref this up.
Yeah, I mean, look, if.
Tighten up the language by next year.
Johnny and Melissa live in the same house, separate emails. I don't know that we're policing that.
As far as the audit of the actual drawing, press more scoopers or some.
Your appointment will happen next month.
Yes, that's right. That's right.
It's actually Ben Affleck from the accountant coming.
I have a, I have a question. Did you say it would attempt, the giveaway would be at 10 o'clock at Windhull?
Yes.
Correct.
8300 Flower Town Avenue in Windmore. Because we're on.
And there was, there was some conversation about being, having a tree dedication that same day to.
That, that is true.
Is that same, that's still on?
Yes, the ceremonial tree will be planted and it will be planted in honor of past Commissioner Baird Standish.
What time does that happen?
During this 10 o'clock ceremony.
Yeah.
It's all right around 10 o'clock.
Yeah, all around 10.
Not very long.
It'll kick off promptly at 10. It'll probably take about 20 minutes to plant the tree.
Okay.
Small dedication ceremony.
Should we bury Baird?
Baird will be there.
Hopefully, yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Are there, will there be any nutrients provided for the tree? Maybe some fertilizer or?
Leaf mulch.
Leaf mulch.
We'll have the leaf mulch there. We have plenty of it.
That's right.
You?
I will sleep tonight. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we had a motion, we had a. Okay, we had a motion, we had a second, we had some comments. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, equal is exciting. There is the sale of the used vehicle. Section five fifteen oh one point two of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code sets forth the regulations, the sale of township personal property via electronic auction. The Springfield Township Fleet Supervisor has requested permission to sell a two thousand and eight Dora Tech Model thirty-ten tub grinder that was recently replaced with our twenty twenty-four Bandit Recycler Horizontal Grinder. The equipment is used to process leaf waste. Therefore, I move that the board of commissioners authorize the sale of the two thousand and eight Dora Tech Model thirty-ten tub grinder via the municipal online public auction site.
Uh, we have a, uh, is there a second?
Yes.
Questions or comments? Anyone's in the market for a heavily used grinder, you know where to get it.
How much does one go for? That is my question.
We are gonna find out.
Twenty-five thousand was the.
Twenty-five thousand.
Reserve.
Reserve, yeah, okay. Okay, there you go.
Yes.
There you go. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a U unanimous vote.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner McNamara. We'll now go to the chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Morris.
Mr. President, sadly, for the third month in a row, I have no report.
That's all right. We'll load you up later. Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Okay, this time the board is once again open to receiving public comment. Hearing none, I would, uh, accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make that motion?
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record unanimous vote and we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Okay, good.
Let's work, yeah.